We move on to the approval of the warrant article. I did want to recognize, we lost two educators. Elizabeth or Betty Morrison, she taught at Pine Glen. Wildwood and Frances Wyman. Her true passion was special education focusing on reading. Betty firmly believed that developing reading skills early in life generally influenced a child's educational success and future opportunities. The second person that we lost was Michael Phelan. Burlington High School math and computer teacher and beloved tennis coach compiling 151 wins. Mike was a Hall of Fame inductee in 2010. Mr. Phelan left this world a better place. He will be deeply missed, but his memory will continue to bring smiles to all those whose lives he touched during his 76 years. Can we have a moment of silence, please? Thank you. Anyone want to make any comments? All right. So, the next item is the approval of the warrant. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, to take roll call. Ms. Masardo? Is she unmuted?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Ms. Novycheck?
Yes.
Ms. Monaco?
Yes.
The chair is a yes. It's 5-0-0. Okay. Next item is approval of the meeting minutes from 10:28:25. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Masardo?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Ms. Novycheck?
Yes.
Ms. Monaco?
Yes.
Okay, and I am abstention, so it is 4-0-1. Student report.
Hi, everyone. So...
Thank you for your patience.
Yes, thank you for waiting.
Of course. So, I have a lot of like main school updates to give today. So, first of all, today was the school step-up day for eighth graders, where eighth graders basically come to the high school and take a tour of the school. This is led by our student mentors and our staff. Then, we have a food drive running for the whole school until November 19th, which is run by student council. And the hallway decoration is also going on. The seniors are red, the juniors are white, the sophomores are blue, and the freshmen have to decorate black. And our spirit day is starting from Thursday to next Wednesday. Our Thursday Spirit Day is Adam Sandler Day. Yeah, that was a fan favorite last year. Then Friday is Generations Day, where freshmen dress like babies, sophomores dress like the kids, and then juniors dress like adults, and seniors have to dress like senior citizens, like old people. And then it's monochromatic Monday, Twin Tuesday, and then like your team color, like your grade color on prep rally day, which is next Wednesday. And then for the seniors, their homecoming sales have been pretty well. Their homecoming dance will take place this Friday. The juniors, they're working on their T-shirt decorating, but their babysit night had been canceled, which was supposed to take place last Friday, but it didn't. And for the sophomores, they earned $138 from their booth basket sales, and they sold 12 baskets, which is pretty good. And then for the freshmen, they're also working on their T-shirt decorating competition next week. That looks like it's it for today.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Sounds like a lot of fun.
Yeah. Okay. So, before we get to the public participation, I'd like to speak briefly about the recent debt exclusion vote. As much of the building committee and school committee are disappointed in the outcome of the debt exclusion vote, we fully understand that many residents simply cannot take on a significant tax increase right now. The economy is challenging for everyone. We hear you, and we want to work with you to find a responsible path forward. We are in a difficult position with the high school. The building is old and requires either full replacement or a major renovation. Our staff has done an excellent job in maintaining it, so that it still looks good on the outside, but the core systems, the HVAC, electrical, plumbing, and more, are outdated and approaching the end of their usefulness. We need a solution that the community can support. One major challenge is that any large-scale renovation, such as replacing the HVAC system, triggers the requirement to bring the entire building to current code. That significantly increases the project cost to a higher number. Still, we hear the concerns from residents, and we are committed to examining every idea, every possible option, until we find the right solution. First step, I think we may all agree on this, we should reapply for MSBA for the high school. I would also like to request that we consult with neighboring towns that have recently been approved to see if there's anything we can do differently or more effectively. While it may be unlikely the MSBA will approve another project, while Fox Hill is under construction, there's no harm in trying. In the meantime, we should focus on what we can do to improve the learning environment for our students and faculty, make it more comfortable, functional, and safe. There may be some smaller, cost-effective projects we can pursue while we work towards a solution. Okay. And we're ready for public participation. Okay, so...
Hello, everyone. Ted Manca. I just wanted to say, I know that you guys all worked extremely hard on the high school project, and want to say I appreciate all of the work that you guys put into it. One of the things that I just did want to bring up, I will be very quick, I will be well under the three minutes, is, you know, during the course of kind of looking at the high school project and everything that was going on, it came to light that the applications for the MSBA funds, it seemed to be copy and paste from one year to the next without changing any of the values, or at least missing a lot of the values. It appeared to be very sloppy work in terms of the applications, so, you know, we were talking about applying again for MSBA. I think that's absolutely necessary. You know, there have been talks about potentially hiring professional grant writers. I think that should be examined. But just the sloppiness of it, to me, the way I interpreted it was, it felt like people didn't care about the taxpayers of Burlington. I'm hoping that that's not the case, but that's just the way that I perceived it, and I think a lot of other people did too. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone online? No? Okay. Thank you. Let's move on to the next information and report, subcommittee reports? No?
Sorry, I'm doing two things at once. Is there... I don't have a subcommittee report, so you sort of got that in executive session, so Ways and Means is not here. I'm not sure Park and Rec has met, or...
Oh, yeah, you guys...
Yeah, they did meet. I was unable to attend. I had a personal matter that I needed to attend to. The Marshall Assignments Field Committee Notice of Intent did appear before Conservation Commission. It's continued to December 11th. There's a couple items with drainage and cleanup they just, Conservation needed a little more detail on. Overall, it seemed like it was well received, again, just tightening up a few areas of concern around the drainage seems to be the focus for Conservation, so we anticipate, hopefully, clearing the Notice of Intent in December doesn't really change the timeline. As we've said, we think we're still on track to begin construction as soon as the weather permits.
Thank you.
Our next meeting is October 20th as well.
Over? It's November.
November, excuse me.
I think you're going backwards, Jeremy. I'm going to relive last month. All right, thank you. So, November 20th, right?
Correct, yeah, November 20th in this room at 6:00 PM.
Sure.
So, when do you think they might be ready to start going, you know?
Oh, to bid?
Yeah.
So, if the Notice of Intent clears in December, I believe January is when we can take it out to bid. Probably have our bids submitted and approved, end of January, beginning of February, and then be teed up for construction, March, April, as soon as the weather permits.
Okay.
Is the goal of the committee, and that's what Nezera's put forth at the engineering firm, so we're all tracking too. As soon as the frost thaws, we're going to put shovels in the ground as quickly as we can.
Okay. One other question. Bob, is the plan then to hold off on the front field until the back one's done?
Yeah, right. Right now, we don't have any traction on the front field at all, so we are holding off on that until we have direction for the back field. We are talking with Nezera to, you know, consider the timeline, but right now, we do not have a plan to bid them both at the same time. At our committee meeting, we decided that it made more sense to keep one field active and then try to time it, that when one field comes back online, then to tackle the second field. Ideally, there may be some benefit to having the same company do that, but we don't get to decide that, so that would be a bid process. But ultimately, focusing on the back field and then bringing the second field, which is the front field, after that.
Yeah, that's what I was hoping you'd say. Thank you.
Any other questions on that? All right. And there's no other announcements?
I just did have a quick kind of shout-out I wanted to give. I was perusing the papers and stuff like that, and at the end of the fall season, I just kind of noted that Burlington Athletics has put a really good foot forward. We had an esports member advance to states. We had boys and girls cross-country team qualify for state tournament. Girls' swimming finished third in the Middlesex League 12 and had a few state qualifiers. Golf advanced the MIA tournament for the state. Girls' volleyball won their first Middlesex League Freedom Title, qualified for state tournament. Girls' soccer team qualified for a state tournament. The cheer team also qualified for regionals, and the football team had an undefeated regular season in winning the Middlesex League 12 Freedom League, so first time since 2006. So, Burlington Athletics is really putting on a show and doing really great things on the field and off, so just wanted to kind of recognize those student athletes, because I know how hard it is being a former student athlete to do both excel at school and then take time for sports, so just wanted to take a second and recognize those folks.
Thanks, Jeremy. All right. Ready to move on? Learning Equity and Thriving: How to State Travel?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, we have some out-of-state travel that were in your packet. So, the first is for social studies teacher Emily McDonough has requested to attend the National Conference for Social Studies Teachers in Washington, DC. Again, this was included in the department budget this year. The costs are identified there. It's recommended the committee vote to approve out-of-state travel for Ms. McDonough to attend the National Conference for Social Studies Teachers from December 5th through December 7th.
Have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Masardo?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Ms. Novycheck?
Yes.
Ms. Monaco?
Yes.
Chair is an aye, 5-0-0. Next. Another out-of-state travel?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Middleton Cox is requesting the band, chorus, and orchestra travel to New York City in April. So, this is an out-of-state travel request, trip for the band, chorus, and orchestra to participate in the Kaleidoscope Adventures, which is part of the New York Festival of Music. The dates are April 10th through 12th. Plans are being made with the assistance of Burlington Performing Arts Parent Association, Mr. Tim Ketterer, and Beth Holmgren. The total cost is the responsibility of the individual students and their families, and will provide many fundraising opportunities to help defray the cost as we work to support families who are having financial hardship. Again, it's recommended that the committee vote to approve the out-of-state travel for the band, chorus, and orchestra to New York City from April 10th through 12th next year.
Motion?
So moved.
Second. Ms. Masardo?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Ms. Novycheck?
Yes.
Ms. Monaco?
Yes.
Chair is an aye, 5-0-0. Next one, out-of-state travel as well.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a request by Diane Haverty for the after-school program to travel to Chunky Cinema on December 11th in Manchester, New Hampshire. Again, it's recommended the committee vote to approve out-of-state travel for the after-school program, travel to Chunky Cinema on December 11th in Manchester.
Have a motion?
I'll make a motion, but I have questions. So moved.
Okay.
Second.
All right. Discussion?
So, this is an after-school program going during the day, out of state to... I don't get it.
It's a vacation day.
It's a...
I didn't hear.
PD day.
There's no school that day?
Okay.
It's a PD day.
All right. So, my question is, will there be a nurse?
There's always a nurse.
Yeah. I think for the after-school program, there would need to be a nurse there.
Okay. So, my approval is based on a nurse being present?
Okay.
Okay. Any other discussion? Ms. Masardo?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Ms. Novycheck?
Yes.
And Ms. Monaco?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes, so that's 5-0-0, and nurse will accompany the trip. Okay, next one is the graduate program survey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to turn this quickly over to Dr. Chen.
Yes, this is... This is a survey that a teacher from the middle school wishes to give. It's part of his graduate program in order for get his master's in Spanish. It is DSSA approved. It will be given to only one class. It consists of 20 multiple-choice questions. You have a copy of what the survey is about. It is really to help this particular person become a better teacher. It is anonymous, and if students wish to not take it, it's purely voluntary, then students do not need to take it. It will take only five minutes or less.
So, we're asking that the committee just, given the new policy, survey policy, we just making committee aware of this, and we are supporting this and asking for your support of this teacher's graduate program. I think he's being very cautious in asking us for approval of this.
Motion?
I have a question.
Well, we can do that.
Yeah, sure. Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Discussion.
So, my question is, will families be able to review the survey in... Yeah. So, we're following just the same policy as...
The same protocol, exactly. It will be sent out ahead of time. The survey questions will also be made available, and you can opt out. If you decide to say it yes, then we'll have to decide whether it's opt-in or opt-out, whatever you guys decide, and then we will follow that process.
Thank you.
Okay. Any more questions or discussion? Ms. Masardo, any questions? Okay? No?
I have a question.
Ms. Monaco?
What are the questions going to be like?
They're in the packet?
So, it's really... The questions, Ms. Monaco, through the chair, are just really focused on the teacher's preparation and lesson, and how the students respond to the teacher's lesson. It's just a way of the teacher getting feedback of his teaching.
Okay, so there's nothing personal in there?
Nothing personal. It's about like, did you find it...
My teacher demonstrates that mistakes are a part of learning.
I get it.
I finished my work in class. It's about the lesson itself.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any more discussion? Okay. I'll go ahead and take a vote. Ms. Masardo? I'm sorry. Do you have a question?
Just one question, because we haven't quite done this yet, so we don't really have a rhythm or precedent. Like, do we want to vote to do the survey and then vote to which flavor it is opt-in or opt-out? Or do we want to do that all as one motion?
You all can do that. I think I should make a recommendation. So, I was going to recommend that you all approve this as an opt-out. So, that's what I was going to recommend, and you guys can follow that or not follow that, is I guess what I would say. And you can vote it together or separate. That I don't care.
So, can I make a motion?
I'm voting separate.
Okay. Then we'll just go with what's on the floor.
So, let them separate?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, we're voting them separate?
Yeah. That's evidently, so...
We can vote them as one. I can amend my motion to make the survey for the, let's see... Graduate. The graduate program survey as described in opt-out survey.
Second.
Okay. And any discussion about that? All right. Ms. Masardo?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Ms. Novycheck?
Yes.
Ms. Monaco?
Yes.
The chair is an aye, 5-0-0. Okay, the next one, next item up, is the school climate survey.
Thank you very much. I'm going to ask Mrs. Conceition to join us. We have a brief presentation, just a background on the school climate survey, even though this would be the, I think, the fourth school climate survey that we've provided. This is under the umbrella of the new policy that we have, so we want to go back and explain sort of why we're doing this. And again, I think what I had mentioned earlier is, to me, the school climate survey is critical information, feedback that we get. It helps us to improve. I think it also helps with some of the safety decisions that we make. It provides us important student, faculty, and parent feedback from a broader audience. And again, I think what we are going to be asking you to consider, once you have all the information, again, the survey will be made available. We're going to be looking for your approval, again, as an opt-out. So, that is going to be our recommendation, and clearly, you can just go in whatever direction that you want, but we wanted to give you some background on, and some details regarding what you're actually considering. So...
Good evening.
Conceition, thank you.
Good evening. Hi, thank you for having me. Here to present a proposal to administer the school climate survey this year to Burlington Public Schools students. So, the survey logistics that we are looking to do is to have the participation timeline span from Monday, December 15th to Friday, December 19th. The survey will be available to all staff, parents, guardians, and students in grades four through 12, with an option for an opt-out pending your approval. Just for demographic, for information, the survey questions were obtained and have always been obtained from the Positive Behavioral Interventions and Support Center. Following the 2002 survey, we, as a district, did add open response questions that were part, included as a request upon the parents and guardians after the initial survey. Just some background information on the Positive Behavioral and Intervention Support Center. It is a national technical assistance center. Its goal is to support schools, districts, and states to build capacity to use the MTSS frameworks to support social, emotional, and behavioral. Their work is evidence-based and focused on prevention and data-driven decision-making. It is funded by the U.S. Department of Education, Office of Special Education Programs, and the Office of Elementary and Secondary Education. Their core mission is really to improve social, emotional, and academic and behavioral outcomes for students. So, I just wanted to give a little background on where the questions have come from. Information about the survey, including the option for an opt-out if permitted, would be shared through Parent Square in accordance with the school committee policy. They will also be posted on our survey website if approved, all of the questions. Just a little bit more, sorry, you're going too quick for me, Bob. One up. Just a little bit more on the survey suite through PBIS. It does provide a collection of surveys that are designed to gauge the perception of students, teachers, administrators, faculties, and families regarding school climate. There's an elementary survey, a secondary survey, school personnel survey, and family survey. Teams and schools can use these separately or in combination to assess perceptions of school climate. All of the survey questions are on a Likert scale, and every survey question does have the option of "I prefer not to answer." The surveys, studies have shown that the surveys are concise, dependable, valid for evaluating school climate among students in grades three through 12. Burlington Public Schools has historically administered it in grades four through 12, and we plan to continue with that pattern this year if approved. Also wanted to know that research highlights that we do need a minimum number of students and school personnel in order for it to be reliable. That is approximately a sample size of approximately at least 100 students and 10 teachers from each building. So, I just wanted to share that kind of information with you. Next school. Why does this matter? I think that's really kind of, really the big conversation. I'm not going to read the slide. You guys have had the opportunity to read them, but we know that positive school climate has many facets and many outcomes. A positive school climate directly enhances our student engagement and academic success. Students who perceive their school climate as safe, supportive, inclusive, have shown to have higher grades, improved attendance, stronger motivation to learn. There are longitudinal studies that show this, that school climate predicts higher standardized test scores and longer-term academic trajectories. It's also very much connected to our supportive relationships in our social-emotional development. We know that environments characterized by trust, respect, caring relationships really foster a positive school climate. It's connected to our mental health and well-being. Supportive climate functions are a protective factor against mental health challenges, and we know that students in positive school climates report lower levels of anxiety, depression, and stress. Beyond kind of the reasons why, I just wanted to also connect it to Massachusetts in specific. It's aligned with DSSA's whole-school, whole-community, whole-child framework. That framework integrates school climate by highlighting the need to support the whole child through safe and supportive learning environments, strong relationships and connections among students, educators, families, and community partners, integrating social-emotional mental health supports, and providing equitable access and learning opportunities. It's also connected to the DSSA's mass-safe school supportive frameworks, where their schools and districts are encouraged to create environments that are trauma-sensitive, relationship-centered, culturally-responsive, predictable, and structured. And I just also wanted to note that DSSA has a focus on belonging and student voice, where it actually encourages the use of school climate surveys for students, families, and staffs. So, there's a lot of reasons why this information is very important and why we're hoping to seek approval to continue with the survey. So, I just wanted to highlight the topics and themes that are covered. These topics and themes are covered within the secondary survey. So, the elementary survey, the fourth and fifth grade survey, is a general perception of school safety. There is not, I go in one of the next slides, I'll actually give you the count of number, but there's not enough questions in that to have multiple themes and topics. It's just a general perception of school safety. In our secondary survey, these are the topics and themes that students and staff are able to note on, so school connectedness, peer social support, adult social support, cultural acceptance, their social and civic learning, physical environment, school safety, and order and discipline. To talk about the demographic data that we are going to be seeking for our grades four through eight, we will be pulling our demographic data directly from our student information system, which is Aspen. So, we will be able to pull grade, school, gender, as it's noted in Aspen, race, ethnicity, IEP or 504 status, and ELL status. All of this data will be de-identified prior to analysis, and we will be using Thought Exchange, again, to utilize, to do the school climate survey. I have information on how we're being able to use our student information system but still have the reporting remain anonymous, so there will be a delinking of identity. So, the student's email will only be used to access, to send a one-time, unique survey link. The instant they submit the survey, the system permanently breaks the connection between their personal identity, which is the email, and their survey answers. In addition, Thought Exchange does no IP address tracking. As additional layer of privacy, the system does not store any IP addresses. This makes it impossible to trace a response back to a specific computer or household. There's an anonymous data stays, so the demographic data, like grade or school, stays with the survey response, but is no longer linked to any student. Therefore, we can see what a fourth grader said, but will never know exactly which fourth grader answered specifically. And as a final layer of protection, there's also small group protection, so as a final safeguard, Thought Exchange will automatically hide data from any group fewer than five responses. So, this ensures that no student can be identified, even if we have a very small response rate from a specific demographic group. The... We can go. So, the nine through 12 demographic questions, these are all of them, I wanted to list them out for you, are what sex were you assigned at birth? What is your current gender identity? Which of the following best describes you, which is related to your sexual orientation? What is your... What is your ethnicity? What is your race? Beyond that, is there another ethnic group with which you identify? Do you have an individualized education plan? What grade are you in? And what school do you attend? Um, we actually, um, when reviewing the survey, I actually was able to eliminate the "what school do you attend?" because they'll all be attending Burlington High School. Um, so that question is no longer necessary. So, those are the demographic questions that would be asked within the nine through 12 survey. Yes?
Do those questions really need to be asked?
Yeah, I'm gonna next, I'm gonna talk about why demographics, and then we can talk specifically about this, any of the specific questions you wanna ask, but the next slide is, is kind of the why for demographics. So, I think asking and gathering demographic information is important, um, and there's really some, three major areas that I wanna point out. It's, allows us to identify and understand perceptions across diverse student groups, so, by obtaining that demographic information, we're allowed to disaggregate the data. Revealing if different groups have different perceptions of safety, belonging, support, whether that we're looking at racial, ethnic identities, grade levels, gender identities, all of those things do come into play, um, and it is able, to have that demographic information, we are able to kind of look at different subgroups and know that perhaps different groups have different experiences in school, um, which we've known and, and I've presented on. We've, we've seen that in our past school climate data, where we've been able to see that different groups have different perceptions of school safety, of belonging, and purpose. It does allow us to, um, assess the representative, representativeness and, um, of the survey. So, being able to know, um, if it is reliable school-level climate data, it does require us that the results, um, are reported by grade level. So, demographic helps determine if respondents reflect the broader school population, or if it's certain groups, or certain groups are under, underrepresented within, within the school climate data. And it does allow us to identify gaps and to inform targeted improvement plans. So, demographic data enables us to identify which populations, such as racial or ethnic minorities, LGBTQ-plus students, or students in specific programs such as IEPs or 504s, experienced school in a different way, um, or have a different perception of school climate, whether it's more positive or less positive. So, that's really the reason behind the demographic questions. Historically, we have been able to look at different, different groups of students and subgroups of students to make, um, decisions about programming, staff development, um, and other, and other areas to try to enhance, um, students, all students feeling safe, a sense of belonging, a sense of connectedness within our school. And our, and the next one, I, I just wanted to highlight kind of the role of demographics and how they have, they have influenced our programming. So, one of the, one of the measures is our school safety measure, so being able to look at how students in different subgroups feel, and whether they feel safe at school, or coming or going to, from school, has really promoted how we've addressed safety within our school. Some examples, as we've continued to work on having our staff within the district trained in the Comprehensive School Threat Assessment Guidelines. We've been doing the district-wide reunification and safety drills. We've utilized this data, um, to apply, recently apply for the Stop Violence Grant, um, which is a federal grant that provides funding to prevent and reduce school violence, been implementing training and developing school threat assessment teams. And we also look at this data when we are trying to understand our district, um, and update our district bullying prevention, prevention intervention plan. So, it really does come into play to know how all students feel, but to also be more targeted, um, in our supports and services for students in different subgroups who may have different perceptions of school climate, or how they are doing in school. In regards to our mental health initiatives, we've utilized this data, um, to build our collaborations with certain, um, partnerships that would enhance the students having access to supports that, um, are either, um, reflecting their diverse racial or ethnic backgrounds, but also language capacity. We learned through the survey that some of our students who are, um, not English-speaking, who are ELL or MLL, did not feel as supported within the school, so we've been very strategic in our partnerships, um, through Cartwheel, through the Brookline Center, and even through recent hires, to make sure that we are trying to seek, um, supports for those students, so they have access to the same tiered level of supports that all students in Burlington have. In regards to the target professional development, there's been, um, a focus on safety, as you've heard tonight. We've done some training on trauma-informed practices based on this. We've done trauma, um, trainings on social, emotional learning to foster a sense of belonging and purpose for our students, and we've even done, um, some service learning, training for our staff and for students. And in belonging and purpose, um, I just wanted to highlight that last year, we actually, based on the school climate survey, we piloted a purposeful leadership program at the high school. It was a course that was designed to empower high school students to become tomorrow's leaders by helping them uncover their personal strengths and teaching them how to positively impact the world around them. So, it was a, um, belonging and purposeful leadership course. It also involves service learning. It was very well-received by the, by the students, um, and it really did come from information of trying to add, give students in the high school an opportunity to, to have a leadership role, um, and student voice, um, based on the school climate surveys. Just some sample questions. So, these are some sample questions for grades four and five, um, that you would see within the survey. Again, the grades four and five, the total survey is 14 questions total, um, but these questions, I feel like I do well in school. Teachers treat me with respect. I feel safe at school. I know my assigned school resource officer. That is a question that we, um, have added this year because we feel as though it's really important, that we wanna make sure that our students know their, their resource officers and know how to connect with them. And there is an adult at my school who will help me if I need it. Again, all of these questions are Likert scale question, um, so they have the options of strongly disagree, disagree, neither agree or disagree, agree, strongly agree, or all have "I prefer not to answer." Some sample questions, um, for grades six through 12. So, you know, I, I can read these, but I know my, I know a student at my school that I can talk to if I need help, for examples, homework, class assignments, projects. Teachers treat me, treat all students fairly. Students at my school treat each other with respect. Students in my school take pride in keeping our school building, example bathrooms, classrooms, lockers, in good condition. Again, I know my assigned school resource officer. I know an adult at school that can, I can talk to if I need help, and I believe in helping others. Again, these are Likert scale questions. So, um, and in addition to this, um, the next slide, I just wanted to also note that this survey does use branching logic, um, so not all students will receive all the same questions, and I think that's really important. I just wanna highlight that. So, the open response questions that were requested following the 2022 survey are given to students who answer in a manner in which they would wanna give more information. So, for instance, um, looking back at the other survey, if you answered strongly disagree or disagree to the question, "teachers treat all students with, teach all students fairly," you would then be branched off to be able to give more specific information on why you, why you disagree with that statement. If you strongly agreed or agreed, you'd move on. Um, so, it's, it's giving students the opportunity who answered in a manner where the question is perhaps they answered as not agreeing, and that's hard, it's hard to say, 'cause I don't know if you looked in your questions. There are some questions that are, um, they're opposite, so, some of our safety questions, if you strongly agreed, you'd actually be branched into, you know, if you said, "I don't, I don't feel safe at school," that's not one of the actual, but like, then you'd be branched into an open response question. So, I just wanted to note that not every single student will experience the survey the same way, or they'll experience the branching survey off to the open response questions based on how they answer the topic questions. And then, and then finally, just a kind of an over, overarching next steps if approved, um, we would be doing our parent guarding communication with an opt-out if approved through you via Parent Square, um, following the school committee policy. We will collaborate with Thought Exchange to restrict access to any student who has been opted out, so they will be blocked from receiving the link. Communication scripts and protocols for educators and administrators will be, um, sent out and, and shared, and we'll establish the clear dates and timelines for administration in each building, in each grade, um, and then work on survey management of that day. Happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Motion?
Oh, no, okay. Uh, I'll take a motion.
Now, what is the motion? I move that we approve... Uh, Eric, can you help me out with this?
Yeah. I'd like the school committee to approve the administration of the school climate survey as presented, um, again, within, within opt-out, um, practice.
So, that's my motion.
Second. And discussion?
I'd advocate for an opt-in.
Any other discussion?
Uh, yeah. Ordinarily, in this, I would agree with Jeremy, except that I don't think we'll get the numbers because people don't, um, always pay that close attention. Some people pay very, very close attention, and some people don't, so, um, it would be a waste of all your effort to do this with an opt-in if you didn't get the right numbers. So, I, I will personally stick with opt-out. But it, all of this will be presented to the parents. They'll see the questions ahead of time, and they have the opportunity to opt-out.
Correct.
Okay.
And again, I think the sample size is, it would be justified for an opt-in. Again, that smallest school is playing gun, 355 some odd students, about a third of the population, and less than a third of the teachers, so I think you'd still reach sample size, um, with that, but again, I think we're gonna move forward anyway.
Through the chair, I, I think we've had very recent conversations that tell us how important this data is in making sure that our schools are safe in many different ways, some of them that we can't talk about in public. So, um, I think this data is incredibly important, and I agree that the sample size will not, is unlikely to be, um, reached if it is an opt-in survey, which is the tipping point for me. Thank you.
I have one, one more comment. The only thing about this that even makes me, you know, slightly uncomfortable is the, a couple of the questions, you know, um, what is it? What's your sex assigned at birth? You know, I understand you need that because of the diversity, and, and I get it, and, and I can live with it, but I do understand how, based on all of our recent issues, that some people may not be comfortable with that statement. And that's why I asked before if, if all of that was necessary.
I, I do wanna highlight, too, that even within the demographic questions, there is always the option for a student to, to answer "I prefer not to answer."
Okay. Okay, and, and it will all be available to parents ahead of time?
Correct.
Okay.
And through the chair, multiple notices to families to, what's the timeframe again? Can someone remind me? Off the top of my head, I...
We need at least 15 days, which we are meeting, and then we need at least three notifications, which we will, which we will meet. So, um, and I think the surveys are ready to be public tomorrow, if you all approve this, so we'll get them up as soon as we can. We use this data, and I understand people are, um, there were some information, implementation issues with the Youth Risk Behavior Survey. I appreciate that.
Oh, yeah.
It's hard, I just don't think we can conflate all the surveys that we ask or the importance of it. I think even some of the critical feedback that we received, and I'll say rightly so, people have asked to provide us this type of feedback. So, um, I think this will give an opportunity for people, this isn't about just telling us what we're doing well. People can tell us, um, what we're not doing well, and, and we've, uh, shared this data with you, I think, for the last three, three years, and I think you all have found it helpful when you, when you get it as well. So, um, this is something that, um, of all the surveys that we do, I think this is a critical survey from, from my perspective.
And I was gonna say that, you know, I, I do sympathize with what you're saying, and I, I hear you. I agree with what Chris was saying, that, you know, the same thing that, the question that makes people uncomfortable is, you know, what sex were you assigned? And there might be some sensitive questions like that, that people, um, may not want in the survey, but I think overall, it's a very important survey to continue, so that we keep the history going, and we can get the proper feedback on the climate and how the students are feeling, and, um, so that we can do those comparisons and improve. Melissa, I can't see you, so I don't know if you have any questions either, any comments?
Uh, no, I'm supportive of it.
Okay.
Yeah, and again, I'm not, uh, um, trying to diminish the merits of what the data's collected, but I think just giving the parents the option to, uh, decide whether they wanna do is really what I'd advocate for an opt-in.
Okay.
I, I heard that in what you said, so...
Yeah, I did, too.
Yeah, no worries.
All right. Okay, um, so we'll go ahead, and we have the, the motion, the second, we've had discussion, and I'm gonna go ahead and take a roll call vote. Ms. Masardo?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Ms. Novycek?
Yes.
Ms. Monaco?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes, so it's, uh, 4-1-0.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. Next item is CD policy, BHS competency determination, and graduation requirements, second reading.
This is second reading, and we are, um, being joined, I think, um, Mr. Sullivan is, is online, so, Bob, if you can unmute Mr. Sullivan, um, I'm enjoying...
Hello, everybody.
I'm enjoying the fact that we can mute you, Mark, just...
Thank you, Dr. Conti, I appreciate that.
That's, that's okay. So, um, again, you have the CD policy. I don't think I did a very effective job, um, last time, making sure that you all know there's a difference between competency determination and graduation requirements. They're two very separate things. And again, Mr. Sullivan is certainly the, uh, expert in this area. Ultimately, we're gonna be ask, asking you to approve the CD policy, the competency determination policy, um, as, um, as you were, um, presented, and if you have any feedback, we'll certainly respond to that feedback. Mark, do you wanna just talk a little bit about how you've developed this? You've worked with, um, again, principals across the league a little bit?
Yeah, so we have a Middle Sex League Principals Group, and we all kinda work together. So, while there might be some distinctions, uh, by different districts, it's, uh, a lot of districts have something very, very similar, and I, just to be clear, 'cause I know there was some conversation last time about, uh, grad requirements and the CD. Uh, the CD, uh, is a state requirement, so it's a DESI requirement at this point, and it represents the minimum academic standards to get a diploma, and it's completely separate from our own local graduation requirements. You know, I think the intent is to ensure that students are meeting essential competencies that the MCAS used to measure, uh, but they're allowing us to use multiple measures instead of a single, high-stake test, which the MCAS was, uh, regarded as. Uh, so, in the CD policy, you'll see that includes course grades, a, a final exam if applicable in a certain course, portfolios, or capstone projects, uh, or equivalent assessments that some other, um, courses may have, and those would be identified in our, uh, program of, of studies. And it's really intended to give us some flexibility, uh, and again, reduce that reliance on a, on a single test.
So, uh, do we need a motion?
I, I had one comment in my mind.
Go ahead, Melissa.
Um, I still think that the math requirement is open to interpretation, uh, the way it's written, of that, um, it's unclear in the, um, credit requirement section if the eighth grade year of algebra would count. So, I either think it needs to say four-year courses taken at BHS, or some clarification, so we don't open ourselves up to folks trying to take only three years at BHS.
So, again, that's, that's a graduation requirement, completely separate from the competency determination. So, for a, for a local graduation requirement, so, um, those are all aligned with Common Core and the math frameworks, so you do have to take four years of math, and currently there is no, uh, conversation about, even if the eighth grade class becomes the full algebra course from the high school, uh, there's been no decision made or a conversation had about whether or not that that eighth grade class would count as a year at the high school. So, right now, that's not an option, uh, and that's not in our program of studies, and the school committee, you all have not approved that, uh, as a change to our graduation requirements.
So, you're seeing a different document states that the graduation credit requirements, not these credit requirements listed here, state somewhere else that you have to have the four years at BHS.
Correct. That's in our program of studies, which you will approve next year's program of studies this January. We're in the process of updating that for next year now, um, and I'll tell you that that has not been a conversation at the school level, um, about changing that. has not been a conversation at the school level about changing that in the program. So in this CD policy, you'll notice that under math, it's the equivalent of one year each of algebra and geometry, and algebra in the eighth grade could count for the CD policy if it is the full high school course in eighth grade. The same curriculum, same assessments, et cetera.
Ms. Monaco?
So there's a distinction, there's a distinction between the two things.
Mark, would it make some sense to put into this policy that the graduation requirements are totally different from the competency requirements? Because they're two different things, and if you read this, you might think, oh, I can go to Burlington High and take two years of math and I'm good, and that's not the case. So should it be stated in there that there are different?
Yep, under section two.
It's stated in there, but it's not open to interpretation.
So we can, so we can certainly update the local graduation requirements in this policy where it says mathematics for full-year courses at Burlington High School.
That's, that was my suggestion.
Well, so you, it's two different things, clearly, but should not the two different things somehow be intertwined so that even though the competency determination means, so you have to take four years, does that mean you can take two years and pass and four years and flunk two of them? I mean, you know, it's not.
Well, not necessarily. You still need to earn the credits and pass four years of math, so you'd have to do, if in that scenario, a student would have to do some sort of credit recovery.
Right.
They would still need to meet those requirements to earn a diploma. And so it is a little confusing, but the Department of Education, as part of this competency determination submission, is also asking us to identify for them, because we don't necessarily submit our program of studies or our grad requirements as a regulatory mechanism to the department on a regular basis. So for this function, when submitting the CD, they're also asking us to submit our local graduation requirements. So I can see how some people may be conflating the two of them because they're asking us to submit both of them on this document, but they're two completely separate things.
And I agree, I understand perfectly. I'm wondering if for the sake of parents or students, it should be documented that this is a competency determination, but it is not fulfilling all of the graduation requirements. I just, I don't know if it should be in there.
So under section two, so in addition to the competency, Burlington students must complete local graduation requirements to earn a diploma.
Okay, got it.
All right, let me make a motion. I make a motion that we approve the competency determination policy as presented with the addition of the language of four full-year courses at Burlington High School under mathematics credit requirements, section two on page three.
All right. Can we do that?
Yes.
Second.
So, yeah.
Okay, any additional discussion? Okay.
So just to be clear, so Mark, you'll make that add that the four-year courses have to be at Burlington High School?
I already did.
All right, great.
All right, Ms. Massardo?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Ms. Novacek?
Yes.
Ms. Monaco?
Aye.
Chair is an aye, that's five, zero, zero. Okay. Next is the district strategic plan?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mark. This is a second reading, again, of the strategic plan and the, my, my goals for, that were presented. I have not received any feedback. That doesn't mean I'm unwilling to take feedback tonight. I'm just telling you, we are looking at the second reading as they were presented after the first reading. So again, it's recommended, school committee vote to approve the strategic plan, and that was formally the Planning for Success document and the superintendent goals as a second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
They look good to me.
Okay. Go ahead and take roll call. Ms. Massardo?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Ms. Novacek?
Yes.
Ms. Monaco?
Yes.
And the chair is an aye, five, zero, zero. Okay, next item up is Journey to CARES.
Yes, thank you very much. All right, so before we begin, I want to highlight a lot of the great work that's been occurring in our other teams that are, been accomplished this month. So we're just on the title page. Thank you, Mr. Kuna. So the business and finance team attended municipal law seminars, met with Sprouts' parent advisory committee, digital learning, computer science, library, information, technology teams. They announced a new professional learning course for all staff on using AI called AI, Your Teaching Superpower. The Red Devil Games esport teams are continuing to do well in the fall season with teams ranking in the top five of several games, including an undefeated player in Madden football. The English K through eight team, I want to highlight that we've been working on CKLA, and I want to congratulate Dr. Bonnie Nichols. We recently applied and were selected to lead a team in the highly competitive DESI-sponsored Dyslexia Institute. This is a state-level initiative focused on advancing research-based practices and literacy in dyslexia education. So very excited about that, always to get more professional development. Human resources team, conducting verification of queries required for all staff, 800-plus every three years. The math K through five team kicked off interventions, grade one through five, and started Math Olympia for grades four through six after-school program. The mental health team obtained a grant of about $70,000 to support students' SEL behavior, mental health and wellness. And just as Captain Dan Hanifin had stated, Chrissy Concepcion and her group on the district wellness team, as, along with Captain Dan Hanifin, they actually applied for a grant, and this grant is for $1 million, so I'm hoping that we get it. The nursing team planned for all nurses to receive a refresher and stop the bleed in our con-training. Operations team installed variable flow drive pumps at Pine Glen and Francis Wyman for heating and repaired sewage injector pumps at Pine Glen. The specials education team has continued their outings for programs have begun, and the student information team updated the elementary report card rubrics for science and social studies for grades K through three and translated into eight languages. And now for our slides. In slide one, I'd like to congratulate, congratulations to Stacy, I.
Yakamides.
I was kidding there. Yakamides, thank you, sir. Amy Perkosky, Paul Rabazi, Mary Felton, and Mary Catherine Dunn. Congratulations to these teacher leaders at Memorial who completed year-long training with William James College and receiving a graduate certificate and leading transformative mental health in schools, and their focus was on communication and culture. The grade six puberty night with Amy Doty and nurse leader Suzie Shields, as you can see, and there's a whole bunch of professional development with CKLA, with elementary teachers, grading with administrators and Dr. John, and curriculum development with Dr. Kateri Thunder, and understanding by design. In the next slide, as we can see in one of the schools, we have a CKLA dress-up as one of the characters. There's also been some reading to preschool students. And Shereen Tyrell, who is our Director of Career Pathways, BHS was invited to attend a Mass Cyber Center's ninth annual Massachusetts cybersecurity forum, which brings together cybersecurity leaders from across the state. And in this picture, we have Maxwell Fahey, the director of the Mass Cyber Center. In the next slide, we have a whole bunch of BHS students who are invited to apply for scholarships and programs for Fidelities Boundless Mass Robotics Jumpstart, Jumpstart, and the National Center for Women in Technology Aspiration Awards. In the next slide, 11 students participated in intensive week-long Sustainable Farming Challenge. This team met for an hour each day with industry professionals and for two hours outside of school for a week and presented an amazing plan for sustainable farm to industry judges. In slide five, these are our pathway seniors, have met with their advisors to talk about college applications, and 40 students attended a full-day field trip to the University of Massachusetts Amherst to learn about business and computer science programs. Next slide, please. Carrie Lamprey, who's the director of English Lunar Education, this is at the high school. Ms. Mendez, Level Four ESL students engage in a powerful Socratic seminar exploring the complex relationship between language, identity, and assimilation with each student using tokens to self-monitor their contributions to this culturally relevant discussion. Jill Graham, who's the director of alternative education, the Simon Youth Academies, they took a trip. BHS, again, with ESL with Gina Beige, students reflected on their story Banana Farm using a carousel activity. This lesson also tied to their cultural experiences and introduced them to their future reading work using the American Reading Company program. In the next slide, you have Gloria Watasek, who's our Director of Family and Community Engagement. We celebrated the grand opening of the Wind Street Closet alongside with middle school staff and community partners, expanding access to essential sources for families in need. And we represented BPS at DESI's Parent and Community Education Involvement Advisory Council, in which Gloria Watasek sits as a member of that council, engaging in discussions with Secretary Tutwilder and Commissioner Martinez on statewide family and community engagement efforts. And also in the next slide, here's Gloria Watasek, continued collaboration with help us to assist families in need by providing clothing, household items, and essential donations, and strengthening community partnerships and support system with Joyce Stilianis and our teacher Karen Hoyt. In the next slide, there's a whole bunch of things going on with science and social studies with Sean Musselman and Wendy Palvacek. That is a very big alligator, by the way. It's supposed to be little, but he's very, very big. Life Science Programs, Beekeeping with the fourth graders, Classification with the third grade, Owl Parts and Functions in the first grade. I really love that. She brings the owls, the owl into class, and the owl has learned how to go from one side of the room to the next side of the room beautifully, and he flies from one side to another side. There's the K through five senses nature walks and the second grade pumpkin science. They also met with grades four through five teachers to discuss strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and asks during PD Day. And they continue to work on enhancing and embedding the CKLA science units, distributing key, key kits aligned to the new materials. So there is a lot of alignment of the science and social studies into CKLA. And then in the final slide, I really love this transition that happens in our schools. Really want to highlight that we start with our young, young people, Life Science Program and the K through five nature walk, and we end always helping our students attend a full-field day, day trip to University of Massachusetts at Amherst to learn about business and computer science programs. That's what we're all about, starting really young, and then they go on this beautiful journey all the way up to high school, and then they graduate and we let them go. All right, that is the Journey to CARES. Are there any questions? All right, at this time, I'd like to provide you with a math update. All right. Because of the integration of grade eight and the Algebra I class this year at the middle school, there's no opt-out exam. So let me say this again, there is no opt-out exam, which means that the grade eight and Algebra I course that the kids are in right now will be based on teacher recommendations and grades. This is the same criteria that we would use if this course were at the high school. So kids who are in grade eight and Algebra I course will receive recommendations from their teachers in grade eight, and it will be based on the grades, and this will determine whether or not they're going to be going into geometry honors. We're continuing to work with Dr. Thunder in the math department in determining the criteria from grade six to accelerated grade seven and grade eight math, because we are going to have some acceleration points. You have grade six, and then there's a choice for to take grade seven, or grade seven accelerated seventh and grade eight. And then these are the criteria we're working on this year, and then from grade seven, accelerated grade seven to grade eight, there's going to be a new choice in 26, 27, which is a full-fledged high school Algebra I course. So students who are right now an accelerated grade seven to grade eight, and we're going to be looking at IREDDI scores, previous MCAS scores, grades, and teacher recommendations, have the opportunity to either go through a grade seven to grade eight course, or if they're scoring and if all the recommendations are made, they can go from grade seven to grade eight if they achieve, achieve the criteria to the true Algebra I course. Because you have some kids that are extremely talented in math that don't need to then go to the grade eight to Algebra I course. We're offering three things in eighth grade. We're going to continue to keep the regular grade eight course, we're going to keep the grade eight and Algebra I course, and then some kids can just purely take, they don't need the review, a double review again, they can purely take the Algebra I course. It's going to be launched next year in 26 and 27. And then again, this summer, we are going to be offering an Algebra I review skills course over the summer. Last year, no one believed me. I said we're going to have between 75 to 100 students. No one would believe me that we, 75 students wanted to take math, and yes, they did. They took math and they did a really good job. We ran those sessions, and the sessions were free. We ran them in July and we ran them in August. And what I'll need to poll is whether or not we will run an Algebra I's review course over the summer and whether or not we need to offer an Algebra II reviews skill course over the summer. So that's where we are when it comes to the math updates. Any questions?
Thank you. Melissa, you good? Okay. Great. Next item is facilities and finance. Finance report?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nicole sent a finance report to you all, an update. This is going to be now a regular part of our monthly schedule. Nicole, is the first or second? It's the?
I think it's the first.
The first meeting of every month, you'll get a, a finance report. And again, things are okay. Nicole and I are a little bit concerned in terms of the balance that we have, it being November. So we're sort of scrubbing, going through some of the potential areas that we can reserve some spending, just so that we have a bigger cushion moving forward. We typically have more of a cushion at this time, so that has gotten our attention. And I hope in the coming months that you'll see that number grow, because we're going to be sort of going through it pretty carefully. And maybe, again, putting off some challenges. I think one of the things where we're struggling with is coverage, and we can have more of the conversations about that specifically, but Nicole's still doing some investigative work in terms of where we are. So we're, again, we're still on budget, but we're not feeling as, as comfortable with the cushion that we have, it being only November.
Thank you. Question? Questions?
Yeah, I just had one. For line 14, the, you know, projected as of October leaves about $13,000, and I know there's still a couple vacancies for Marshall Simons. You know, if those get filled, will there be enough ceiling to fill those? Or can we divert funds from somewhere else to cover that if those positions get filled? Or do those fall under the special education line? I wasn't entirely sure.
Through the chair. So for those, we're looking into some cost savings and other areas of the budget that we can offset to fill those, and we're going to be working with departments on Thursday to do some of that work. to do some of that work.
Thank you. Ms. Monica?
Yeah. Is there an issue with coverage for maternity leaves and, you know, sick bank issues and that kind of thing that might be contributing to this?
Yes, I think sometimes with the coverage for maternities, when we're not able to fill them, we have to pick up additional sections for teachers, which tends to be a little more expensive than just the regular coverage if we were able to fill it. So that's definitely something that we're running into more and more often now.
I see.
And it also depends on the license and the specificity of the person who is on leave. So we can't put a per diem in a speech-language pathologist's coverage. So it's, you know, we have to think about it a little bit differently. Nicole does a great job historically, looking at our sort of leaves and how we fill them. The pool to hire into is much smaller than it has been in the past.
You can't put an English teacher teaching AP Calculus.
Any other questions or concerns, Jeremy?
I just had one more. So the, was line eight and 13 on the operating budget, is that just encumbrances that haven't evened out, or is that pressure going to continue, and really where we're still operating above margin?
So for line eight, for directors, if you look at line 12, the negotiated salary adjustments, some of that is just like newly settled individual contracts that I just, it's just a timing difference there. Just a timing difference there, that those two lines should net out together.
Too easy. Thanks.
Nicole, I have complete confidence in your work, that you will keep us on track.
Thank you, Mrs. Monica.
Melissa, any questions from you? You good?
No, I'm good.
All right. Yep, cue. Just want to make sure I don't miss anyone. Okay. And next is Fox Hill Building Committee, the update. Besides the meeting we had tonight, you want to talk about that?
I think since the last school committee meeting, the only update is that we are just about to go out to bid. We covered, again, we have four construction companies that we're expecting bids from. They will go out at the beginning of December, and the latest ones are expected back the very beginning of January. So by the end of January, we will have a construction company, and we will break ground as soon as we're able in the spring.
Thank you. And the next one is the BHS Building Committee. We have one more meeting on December 11th at 6:30 PM to vote on an invoice, and then, of course, we'll probably have some discussion on a path forward.
Madam Chair, may I add something to the high school piece? Because I think it aligns with what your statement was at the beginning, and also the public comment. The district has had great success with the MSBA. So I understand the narrative, and people are upset because the high school didn't pass, but it's not because of our application, and boy, do we take the Burlington taxpayer dollar concern seriously. And again, three projects in 12 to 15 years is an exceptional record. My suggestion is because we obviously are blessed with lots of experts in the MSBA process and the statement of interest, my suggestion to the committee, I'd like you to consider keeping the BHS Building Committee active. And Bob, if the state moves forward with the statement of interest, and again, every indication is that they will, that window will open in January, is that correct?
Yes, January.
I just think the task of the BHS Committee, and people can get off if they want, and maybe you can consider adding people, should be the production of the statement of interest. I just think if we do that together, and people understand that it is a repetitive sort of type of grant, that our needs aren't changing, we could be the first runner-up one year in the pool of people, and the next year doesn't mean that we move up. The next year, we could be 20th in line. So it's a process that we can do that. When we've had the Board of MSBA here at the high school, they've done a tour, I think that was 2017, they said our statement of interest was well-aligned with the building's needs. Also, all their information that's coming up in December is every four years, Bob, I'm going to make sure, four or five years, the MSBA does an evaluation of every school building in the Commonwealth. And so they've already been through all of our buildings, and they're going to rate our buildings. That information will be public in December. So if we all think the high school is in terrible shape, but the state sees every other high school in the Commonwealth, and they rate so many high schools ahead of us, and those high schools apply, in other words, they don't, they're not trusting just local perspective on their buildings, they have a rating system of every building in the Commonwealth. So we will have that information. And again, the latest one we have, I think, is from 2020, maybe?
Latest survey.
The latest survey from MSBA that is on their public website, I think, is from 2020. So again, we'll have new information. We can get more information. We can maybe use some of the design work that was done as part of the process. We can certainly enhance our statement of interest with the MSBA's evaluation of the building. And I think if there are more people looking at the statement of interest, there'll be more collective judgment, and I think that'd be a better way to go about doing it. So maybe we can have this discussion moving forward. But I don't want to see the next meeting be the last one, and again, obviously, Tape and Doran Whittier will step away, but I think we can continue to have productive meetings and go through the statement of interest, and make sure everyone feels like we're putting our best foot forward. Because sort of now feeling after the fact that we don't do this well when we've done it well, I, again, I understand there are some issues with the statement itself, again, I would take issue with, but I think the way of Sunlight's the best disinfectant will bring more people into the process. And again, Bob, the window is typically in January, correct? So we would have, we would need to work pretty quickly to get the statement of interest submitted?
Yeah, historically, it opens the second or third week in January, and then closes the first week in April.
So we would have some time to do it, and then we would hear then the following December, typically. Okay?
Ms. Monica?
Well, does it, you know, when you're applying to college and the window opens in January and ends in April, is there any benefit to applying sooner rather than later?
Not to my knowledge. My understanding is that everyone submits when the window, I'm sorry, everyone submits, and then the window closes, and it doesn't matter if you're first or last. Then the process of determination begins after that, which is why there's no notification until roughly the end of the calendar year. So about December is when notification comes out.
I wonder somehow we could confirm that, but I don't know. I like Dr. Conti's plan on that. I was going to say the same thing about how we've gotten Memorial and Marshall Simons and Fox Hill all, you know, through MSBA, and I think it's, we have a good relationship with them, and I would, I know we have no expectation that they would engage in another project while Fox Hill is being built, but it can't hurt to try, so.
What else?
Just that if there are any grant writers out there who want to join the high school building committee, I'm sure we'd love to have you.
That's right.
So please reach out.
Yep.
I mean, I got the same comments with the committee. It certainly presents us with an opportunity here to refine our plan, look at it from a different lens, and maybe move forward and try to engage with other town entities to align things a little more, a little better, rather, to maybe get the public to have a little more support.
I wondered if you could talk with some of the area superintendents who've been successful recently, and see what kind of additional information they may have included in their applications?
I have, actually, because of that suggestion. Ms. Bond and I had that conversation. And the, again, there is multiple pathways to do this, but I think one of the pathways that I thought made sense for us in the high school was oftentimes, if the school gets invited into the grant program, the school committee forms a building committee at that time. Some superintendents are now forming building committees ahead of time, doing the statement of interest through a building committee even without being in the grant program. And then, again, some communities even have standing building committees that sort of do this work as sort of a combined way to go. They do feel, according, again, in agreement with Mr. Brooks, that it allows for more, greater understanding across a diverse group of town departments. And then my colleagues also say it also, as people come to better understand the process, it also distributes the accountability. So again, it's not someone making a comment at the end that, boy, had I only done something differently, that we would have gotten the grant. So I do think, in speaking to everybody, keeping our high school building committee in place is the right thing to do for everything that Mr. Brooks mentioned in terms of communication. Again, I'm also would be excited for the help, and we can create, I hope, a better statement of interest, and then depending on the pool of schools, maybe, you know, be fortunate enough to be included. So I think that's kind of what I had uncovered. I also spoke to, MSBA was at the joint conference there and spoke to them as well, and again, they're a great partner. They want to continue to work with us. They're invested in the success of Fox Hill, but they want to see us succeed, all of our school buildings succeed too. So they know that we're working on this.
Thank you. Ms. Monica?
All of the information that we have, that we've gained from going through the feasibility study, is any of that information that could be passed on with the new application?
Again, through the chair, I believe it is. I think we can also ask for some targeted enhancements, things that would have been sort of dug into deeper had the project moved forward. So maybe we can do a targeted look at health and safety features. We can look at other things where, again, I think Tape looked at something from a feasibility level, but maybe in a statement of interest, it would create more of a sense of urgency with the MSBA if we looked at things differently. I did speak with Tape, and they are willing to help us out, just, again, the feasibility part of this is over, and obviously, we would have to talk about if they were going to, if there was a time and materials charge or not. I think they were saying they wanted to, they're invested in the community, they want to see this succeed too. So, and again, even if they said we don't get any future work, I think they wanted to, they would be invested in terms of helping us. So I do think it's something that having committee in place and not having me have that conversation alone, I think, would be helpful. So I do think, again, the vote was clear. It was definitive. So got the message, but I do think we can, we need to continue the conversation, because the building, the vote doesn't solve the issue. It just said, we don't want to go in this direction, so we have to talk about other directions, that's all.
But we're here to represent the residents, and the residents have made a clear statement, so we got to figure it out.
And then if not, and if we're going to do something gradually, because Andover is sort of in the same place, then we probably need to put together a 10-year renovation plan, so we're not picking pieces of project, we're doing it in a way that's smart. If this is going to be the building we have, then it may take us a lot longer to do, but we should also do that in a systematic way. So maybe, again, we'll have to talk about that as well, because that would be something that I certainly couldn't do. I mean, we would need a professional to sort of map that out. So I think that would be, so even if we're, Bob and I were talking about warrants, because the warrant schedule is accelerated with Mr. Denazio, and do you want to, you know, take a piece, like, we need to have a plan before we propose anything, so it doesn't make sense for us to, you know, I think, put anything from the high school perspective on there until we have the statement of interest done, until we have a plan in place. We have other warrant needs, not what I'm saying, but I'm just saying, I just, we're not going to turn around and say, okay, we need, I don't know, you pick a new...
What Andover did, they turned around and said they needed $60 million to bring in portable.
Yeah, but, right, but I think they have a 10-year plan, so they had to move kids out, because they know what they're working on. We don't have that plan yet, that's all I'm saying. I would never recommend portables or anything until we have a plan in place. Bottom line, I don't want to overtalk, is I think we should keep the school building, the high school building committee in place. I think we should have meetings. I think we should work on our statement of interest as a first priority, and then we can continue to have conversations about this building, and I think broadening that base of conversation, I think, will create a better product, and I also think would help increase understanding, and also, you know, have more people invested. So I mean, I think that's, would be my recommendation, after speaking to lots of my colleagues.
Thank you, Dr. Conti. All right. Next item up is Facilities.
For both the next two, no major updates. We're continuing to work on them. We're continuing to invest in our buildings and perform maintenance. Same with the transportation schedule. We've made changes as late as today, right? So we are continuing to obviously look at those. One thing of note, a message was sent around to principals that there's been a little bit of turnover, three positions at the bus company, so we have three new drivers. And they have been trained on the routes, they're working on that, but again, just to let families know that you will see three new faces on some of the routes. So they're transitioning those three new faces in, and they will be part of our team. They are part of our team, but you will see some three familiar faces exiting and three new faces coming aboard.
Thank you. So we did Facilities and Transportation. Any new or old business updates? Motion to adjourn?
Submoved.
Everyone in favor?
Aye.
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 Meeting's adjourned.